Hello and welcome once again to another Board of Education Meeting Recap, this time for January 2020, and we're excited to have you all here in this new year and a new decade.
That's right.
And of course, a new recap, and I'm joined here with Superintendent Mary Elizabeth Davis.
Thanks for having me and Happy New Year.
And I'm J.D. Harden, Executive Director of Communications and Public Relations for the school system. As always, our meetings and the board actions are highly important to our school system and its success, and of course, we want to bring you all the great actions that they take each and every month. And we really started off the month of January on a high note, celebrating not only the new year, but some other accomplishments of our board.
We actually kicked off this very first meeting of 2020 by reflecting on our very last meeting of 2019, and that meeting coincided with the Day to Celebrate Learning across Henry County. Now, that day originated out of our Board of Education's desire to really formally recognize, acknowledge, and celebrate our teachers, our leaders, our employees, and our kids, and to really recognize that our Henry County schools are the best possible place to learn. But what it turned out to be was an amazing community-wide celebration. Actually had an opportunity to reflect on some of the responses students provided in their reaction to why they love to learn in Henry County. Take a quick listen. You know, there really are very few moments in which we're able to draw a direct and explicit line of alignment from the boardroom to the classroom, but December 9th was one of those days where you couldn't help but see it. I actually wanted to take a moment and read an excerpt from a writing response that one of our students at Locust Grove Elementary School shared. This is a first grader. I'm actually going to read two first graders. First grader number one, "Dr. Davis, I love learning in Henry because I love the work my teacher gives me. My favorite part of school is reading, and I make a lot of friends in Henry County. I love being in first grade because my teacher lets us keep up at all our learning, and I love Henry County. I am proud to learn here." A second first grader said, "I love learning in Henry because it has phonics." Good job, board. "I love learning in Henry because science is about magnets. I love learning because we learn lots and lots and lots of things. I love Henry because in writing, we talk about historical figures. I love learning in Henry because we use illustrations and detail in descriptions of key ideas." This is a first grader. "I love Henry because in first grade, I am proud to go to Wildcat Fest," which I think is for positive behavior, "and I love learning. Thank you for letting me learn here." I just think it's really rare where we get to tangibly see our board's core beliefs show up in the experiences of our children. You know, reading, making friends, loving one's teacher, pride in one's education, and clear and purposeful learning is what this Board of Education has been about, and it is summarized in their core beliefs now translated into first grade writing tasks.
In addition to that outstanding work from our students, which was really displayed in a lot of different ways, that was just one small sample, and we'll be sharing those out over the coming months. We also had a great display of community unity with our municipalities and our government leaders all across the county also weighing in to celebrate learning in Henry County schools on that important day by issuing their own proclamations. We'll talk a little bit about more about that later on in this particular recap, but it was a great way to really showcase the value of our school system across this county.
That's right. I mean, I think what we saw was that everyone in their purple and everyone acknowledging that great schools are a part of great communities, and we're really proud of the Henry County schools, our kids, our families, and our employees. So I think that there was also an opportunity in this reflection moment to acknowledge that our Board of Education has really created a strong and stable foundation, and in December, they were recognized across the state with a leading-edge award, that they were one of two Boards of Education across the entire state of Georgia to receive this recognition, and it has largely been because of what they have coined unified governance. Their unified governance model has become something that other districts desire to learn more about and have really tried to spend some time investigating what it is that the Henry County Board of Education has done to build a solid foundation and a strong unified governance model. So it was an exciting time to really talk about closing out the last calendar year on a high note and kicking off a new semester of learning, really with great momentum.
Part of kicking off a new calendar year for our Board of Education is also the election of Board Officers. It's a process that we do every single year.
That's right.
And of course, we thank Mr. Hinton and Ms. Cobb for their services past year as Chair and Vice Chair, and this year's election, speaking to that stability that you talked about, they were able to be reelected by their peers to serve in the 2020 calendar year in those same roles.
That's right.
The Board really accomplished a lot last year, and they're really, you know, their goals and the things you hear set forth through their core beliefs and commitments really speak to their belief in our school system and trying to take it to new heights. So congratulations to Mr. Hinton and Ms. Cobb in continuing their roles as Chair and Vice Chair.
That's right, and of course, right from there, we went into the business of the Board.
We had the opportunity to start, as always, with our financial report, and also hear from Mr. Josh Malcolm, our Chief Operations Officer, around our construction report. But one of the things that Ms. Willis, our financial officer, was able to talk about, and it's an important process.
That's right.
At the beginning of every school year, and that's our budget development cycle, and she was able to give the Board a little bit of information about that.
Yeah, it has become pretty traditional that in January, we lay out the budget development calendar for preparations into the next school year. So here in January, Ms. Willis did articulate the timeline for developing the FY21 budget, which will begin on July 1st of 2020, and it will initiate in our February Board meeting, our February 10th Board meeting with a community conversation, and that community conversation will merge discussions about the priorities and values as it reveals itself in our spending and our budgeting, as well as our strategic planning process combined. So we'd invite you to join us 6:00 on February 10th at the Henry County Board of Education Office in order to be a part of that important community conversation to kick off our budget development cycle. Now, that means that we'll head into the spring with anticipated adoption of a tentative budget in April and the adoption of a final budget in May, and that will get us ready for the 2020-21 school year.
Now, the community voice looms large in these conversations and the budget development, and they've done a tremendous job the past couple of years of really setting the course of the school system meeting all the needs, their needs, their wants for, you know, solid education for our students while also making sure that we balance the budget, and so we've been able to accomplish that.
That's right. You know, one of our Board's core beliefs is that community and family involvement is critical to student success, and really through that commitment, they are seeking continuous engagement opportunities with community members, stakeholders, families, and really looking for every possible opportunity to engage in dialogue about how priorities of our community are revealing itself in the successes of our students and of our schools. And so that community voice campaign really has become pretty integral to their work. So that was a good point.
The next presentation that we had was a very key time of the study session, and that was Ms. Sue Smith, our Chief Officer over Human Resource Services, and Ms. Willis accompanied her to really lay out this employee profile that we're working to, you know, this compensation profile, if you will, to really illustrate the value that our employees have to our school system beyond what they see on the paycheck each and every month. There's so much more that goes into supporting our employees and really letting them know how valuable they are, and it is one of our largest expenditures as a school system. Almost 90% of our budget is directed towards salaries and benefits, and Ms. Sue Smith and Ms. Willis did a really good job of illustrating that picture for people.
Yeah, I think you see a common theme, J.D., in this January Board meeting. It's really about preparation for the 2020-21 school year, and that does require a budget to be developed and passed by the Board, but it also, it requires us to really consider how do we ensure the highest quality education through the attraction and retention of the highest quality talent in the education field? And so this employee compensation profile really is the Board's opportunity to clearly articulate the investment made in each one of our job families and each one of our professionals. It was a great dialogue about this investment being a priority for the Board of Education and also an opportunity to really articulate what are those advantages, benefits, and really opportunities that are afforded those who work and serve in the Henry County community.
Of course, our Board members had some good feedback on the presentation, so let's take a listen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, and Superintendent Davis. Mrs. Willis and I are very excited to review with you some plans for compensation and benefits that will serve as our newest recruitment and retention tools. The Board's largest investment in our organization is our employees. 90% of our budget goes towards employees.
What you see here is a prototype of an employee profile for a teacher with a certificate level equivalent to a T5 with 15 years' experience. As we head into the FY21 budget season, we will continue to seek out compensation and benefit packages that attract and retain effective employees for our core business of student learning.
So the next step in the compensation and benefits continuous improvement process is a review of our supplemental benefits. While we are required to use state health benefit plan for our medical benefits, districts may use other providers for their supplemental benefits. Through an RFQ process, a request for qualifications, we are going to ask benefit brokers to provide us with quotes for these supplemental benefits, as well as any others that may round out a comprehensive, cost-effective, value-added benefits package for our employees. And then, of course, we have to redesign and rebrand our benefits communication, all in anticipation of full-scale communication and rollout to district employees during open enrollment September 2020. So that's the big plan. So with the Board's support, we will continue our cross-divisional focus on induction, onboarding, and ultimate retention across every job family.
Well, that's exciting because I'm sure there's some new age stuff out from benefit companies, but I just wanted to say something about the employee benefit profile, or I'll say the compensation statement. I know everybody in this room who's been here for three-ish years has heard me harp on this, and I am so glad that it's on the horizon because during budget time, the Board members, you know, it's hard because we do value the employees, and we obviously can't do this without employees, but there's numbers that Board members have to look at behind the scenes that the public doesn't always see go into their bank account. So I just, I don't know if it's going to make it better or worse, but it'll make me feel better at least knowing like what, you know, the extra percentage that we're putting into them, whether they actually see it in their bank account or not. So I appreciate you guys for putting this together.
I would appreciate this, and especially being told, you know, even though we may be going with different brokers, you know, when you start comparing apples to apples, these have the best benefits for us, and I hope our employees will appreciate that too, and to keep our costs down but to give our employees the benefits that they deserve.
The broker services really are the vehicle for that communication, so it will be far less confusing, and I will tell you, to your point that you just brought up, there is one out there that is offering pet burial services and pet healthcare. No joke. So hey, you never know, we might even be able to have that.
Y'all know how expensive that is, geez Louise, but yes, I appreciate it.
We may be surprised by the options that are out there that will benefit our employees.
That's great.
I think this is awesome, long overdue for the number of employees that we employ. So I think it's, and it's going to be good because they will be able to see how much this system values them when they look at this compensation package, and I'm glad to see it's coming forth and we're moving toward that era with the compensation package because they need to know what the investment is on the Board's behalf for them because they don't see that now, and I think once they see that, maybe they'll know how much this Board appreciates and values them.
I love the look of this, and I think that, I mean, it's just very clear. If I was in this job family, I can see what I bring home every month and what I see show up in my bank account, but this number at the bottom really does show an additional value that sometimes goes unnoticed. So I think that's really important, and I think it's really clear and easy to read for people like me who are clueless about this kind of stuff. So thank you all so much for your work, and I hope that our employees really know how much that they're valued, and even though they may not see it in their bank account like they wish, it is truly there in all of these additional benefits.
So moving right along, the next presentation up was from Mr. Kirk Schramm, our Chief School Leadership Officer. Every year, we have a review process for our code of conduct, which really sets the course for our students to ensure the safety and security and orderliness of every school across our, you know, district, and he was able to outline that process for our school Board, and of course, we'll move into that in the coming months to make sure that that is put before the public and they can weigh in and see any changes that they think need to be made or anything that we have to make adjustments for based on any legislation or things that are handed down by the State General Assembly. After that, Melissa Morris, our Chief Learning and Performance Officer, had the opportunity to share with members of our audience and everybody that would be watching through our on-demand feature, an update to the Academy for Advanced Studies. There's really some great work taking place over there, and that has been a cornerstone for our school system for the past several years since its inception and, of course, expansion, and then, of course, with the approval of our voters here in Henry County through the East Bloss. They were able to work on a replacement school for Henry County, which is now McDonough High School, and then it allowed, you know, the Academy for Advanced Studies to basically expand into the former facility for Henry County High School, and there's only more growth on the horizon, and she did a good job articulating and sharing the plans for that.
It really was a great opportunity to reflect on this foundation that has been built here in Henry County in order to provide an exceptional college and career academy. As a matter of fact, this College and Career Academy has been the beacon for career training across the state of Georgia, but we had the opportunity for the Board of Education, along with the Board of Directors at the Advanced Academy, to come together in a joint board meeting and really consider what should be the next phase of development for this program area. And so three themes came out of that conversation that are important to review. That first is reimagining and really restructuring the career pathways that are already in existence at the Academy. In order to do so, four schools of study have been now established underneath the umbrella of the Academy. Those schools include the School of Business and Digital Design. There will be a second school called the School of Wellness and Community Service. A third, that's called the School of Power, Energy, and Automation, and the fourth, a School of Creative Studies. Now, in within each one of those schools, pathways will be aligned, and those pathways will be partnered particularly with higher education partners for post-secondary experiences as well as industry partners for support and industry placement experiences. That reimagining of those pathways into these schools will begin to reveal itself as we start the next school year. But the second priority that came out of the joint boards was the opportunity for middle school students to have early exposure to the career opportunities, the career training, and the program areas of the Career Academy, and the Board had the opportunity to consider a partnership with Junior Achievement in order to bring a discovery center right here to our Henry County community and to actually establish that within the facility of the College and Career Academy. So that Junior Achievement Discovery Center could become a destination, field trip location focused around financial education as well as workplace and career exposure right there at the Advanced Academy, and so we will continue to keep the public updated on the progress made with the Junior Achievement Partnership. And then third, and the final priority, was an adult education access point. Lots of parents who attend open house for their students at the Advanced Academy, well, they want to know how they can go there too, and we see lots of opportunities to possibly extend the scope and the reach of the Academy in order to include some opportunities for adults in the community to attend programs and classes themselves. It was a great discussion, and I think it'd be a great time to listen into the Board members' comments.
Yes, thank you so much. I really enjoyed that presentation and honestly can't just really express how excited I am about the future of our Academy and just really how proud I am to have it in Henry County. It really is amazing, and the meetings that you discussed earlier, that honestly, just I was honored to be a part of that whole process. I found myself so excited as I was leaving each of those meetings, just thinking about the future and just, as you said, the parents expressed, I wish I could do this. I left thinking, wow, I wish I had had these opportunities when I was a student myself. So just really excited about our Academy and the future, as I said. I was curious if you had any idea about the Creative Studies School and how that might look different from what's already offered at our traditional high schools?
Yeah, that's a great question, and when we think about what's offered at our high schools, we need to ensure and maintain the amazing Fine Arts and CTAE programs that are happening at every one of our high schools. So just like having pathways that are unique to the AAS CTAE pathways currently and then maintaining strong CTAE programs back at the high school, we would ensure the same thing with Fine Arts. So really being confident to shape the direction of the future, to make it unique so not competitive to what's happening at the schools, but instead complimentary, because honestly, Fine Arts at every school is such an important opportunity for students, and a lot of times, that is the place where students connect to their high school, so in no way would that be seeking to minimize that opportunity at those high schools, but instead simply enrich it.
That's perfect. Thank you so much, and I also appreciate what you shared about Junior Achievement, and I really was, I had heard of it before, but was really not informed on the services and the benefits that they offer to students and was really just excited about the possibility of bringing that into our Academy, and just, I can just picture our students coming there and just being blown away, and as we discussed in one of the meetings, how their lives might be changed because of that. They might set themselves on a different course, and anyway, just really excited about that and thankful that we were able to hear that presentation, so thank you for all of that.
And it just makes me very happy to see that now we have different pathways for people to pick. Working with the Academy in the past, it was how do you get the information of what our offerings are to all of the schools? Because it's interesting during, when they sign up, the kids say, well, I didn't know I could take that, or I didn't know that was here, and then you hear the parents say, well, I wish I could take phlebotomy, or I wish I could do cosmetology, and so, you know, then you start thinking a different way. So it's just wonderful to see that, you know, we are thinking, you know, there are more, there's more out there than just A, B, and C. You know, why not throw Z in there too? So thank you very much for expanding, and I'm like Ms. Cobb, I had heard about, I had heard about the Junior Achievement, yeah, but I didn't quite know what it was. So that would be an interesting asset to any of our buildings that we have.
Yes, thank you so much for that presentation, and like Ms. Cobb said, being in those joint board meetings is just really energizing and exciting, and I'm especially excited about the prospect of Junior Achievement coming and this discovery center. Like, I hope that we get to go be a part of it and just test it out before we allow the kids to come and make sure it's top-notch, but...
We want to make sure it's right.
That's right.
It's a good enough.
But it's, it is so cool. I mean, it's like a Disney World for business. Like, it's everything, and it's real, and it's, I just think this is such a cool opportunity, and I really am excited about the potential of kind of, you know, linking arms with them and moving forward to offer opportunities for our middle schoolers. There's very little that would make me want to go back to middle school, but this may be a...
That's what I was...
And I also love the idea of offering opportunities for the adults in our community. I think that that's really going to open opportunities and doors for people that they may otherwise not have, so thank you all for your hard work, and I'm excited about the future of this.
You provided us with a lot of information, and the meetings, the joint meetings were very exciting to me as well. I just would like to see some of the classes, as you spoke of, merged together, classes from the high school being taught at the, at the AAS, because I know there is a problem right now with some of our schools being so far away from the, from AAS. They're getting, the students are getting back to their schools to get, to attend their core classes late, so I would like to see that merger somehow with those classes. I am well aware of Junior Achievement and the opportunity it provides, because my son was in Junior Achievement, and he loved it. Now he's a PhD in chemical engineering, so I was a part of the Junior Achievement for a couple of years as he went through middle school. Also, the Junior Achievement will provide some opportunity for our middle schoolers. You know, they can't attend AAS until they're in high school, if I'm correct, so this would give the middle school, middle school kids an opportunity to get involved with some type of career opportunities, and so they won't feel left out because I think it's a great opportunity. Lots of work. Thank you.
That's a, that's a lot of good things that you talked about, about the Academy. A lot of good things happening. I think our number one or one of the top few challenges or obstacles still is just going to be marketing it to all of the students so they know it's there, because I still talk to people, parents and kids, that just have no idea what their place even looks like or what, you know, opportunities are over there, and if you ever had the opportunity to visit it, I mean, it's just, it's so phenomenal. And to speak on the Junior Achievement, I had heard the name, I knew nothing about it, but I've heard, I've been able to sit in on a couple of presentations now, I've seen the video a few times, and I think that it is really cool that they're eyeballing Henry County to put it, and if we could make that work out, I think we need to do what ever we can to make that happen. I just think it would be kind of a destination hotspot. It would put Henry County on the map more so than it already is. We would have kids from all around, probably South Atlanta, coming to us, and I think if I remember hearing the presentation right, I think our kids would get to attend for free. Okay, so that would be a bonus, be more field trips, it would be good. So from what I heard, this doesn't require a vote, but from what I heard, it sounds like it's positive comments with Junior Achievement, so I think, Dr. Davis, the Board would be directing you, it sounds like, to send Junior Achievement a letter of intent just so we can kind of get the ball rolling and see what the next steps are.
So if I understand correctly, and really our discussion at the joint board meeting generated a tremendous amount of interest and positivity, that was pretty collective, and so I think it'd be a pretty reasonable next step to go ahead and express publicly our commitment to pursue Junior Achievement as a partner and then journey through sort of the assessment phase of that partnership in the coming weeks, so I think we can easily accomplish that. It sounds like the Board is eager to see what that partnership could look like.
So as you can see, there's a lot of great things on the horizon for our College and Career Academy, known as the Academy for Advanced Studies, so stay tuned. They'll be in development, and you'll be able to see those as we communicate those out here in the near future. Now, moving right along, we had our monthly strategic plan update provided by Dr. Knowlton, our Chief of Staff, and of course, yourself, giving the Board an update on what all has transpired and what all lies ahead in this very important process. We're really setting the course for our school system. You know, it's that last key piece for a high-performing school, Board of Education for a high-performing school system or district, and this last piece is really coming together, and it's, you know, we're really trying to bring the public in to help this...
That's absolutely right. We're in this phase that is really leveraging a community voice campaign. Our commitment is to visit with each school council at every one of our schools, so that's 50 school council meetings. We also plan to attend 50 school faculty meetings so that we get to each of our schools and spend time with our staff and our employees, and then we will host four community-wide community conversations. And really, this is all in an effort to build on this strong foundation that has already been established, that our Board has already stabilized, and that we have this now walk roadmap into this new decade. And so it's been great work, it's been great dialogue with our community, and we look forward to seeing you soon at one of those conversations.
Of course, we then moved right along where we were able to continue our discussion on the Comprehensive Policy Review that's currently underway, thanks in partnership to GSBA, and we heard from Dr. Knowlton with the latest updates on some of our policies, and we're really working down from 170 policies, some that were outdated, some that, you know, weren't needed anymore, and they've really done a solid job of helping us really pare that down, and of course, we're only on set three of eight different sets that we're reviewing to land on what will be, you know, obviously, all the policies that guide the work of our school system and set those parameters. school system and set those parameters and boundaries for us. So after that, you know, it was time to really transition over to our business meeting. There were some items that were presented as business items during the study session that the Board later took action on in the business session. And so let's move on into that. Of course, it's a great time to welcome everybody in for the evening. We had a nice crowd to hear and see the actions that were taking place. Always starts off with, though, our students, which we are so glad to have as an inspiration, and that was no different for this month. We had McDonough High School's drama ensemble to provide a little bit of a, you know, welcome and an inspiration for the meeting. And moving along from there, we were able to recognize, you know, some students for their hard work that has been accomplished this past year with our Model Water Tower Competition hosted by the Henry County Water Authority. Congratulations to those students, some outstanding work from building design, building water towers, kind of remarkable stuff. I wasn't building a water tower in middle school, I promise you that. But then they also had, they were writing contest winners, and they were also poster contest winners. So, you know, all different aspects of our students' many talents on display, and we were so glad to be able to recognize them. So moving right along from, you know, the great recognitions that we were able to provide for those students, it came time to take action on some of those consent agenda items that the Board had heard during the study session.
That's right. Our consent agenda included important action from the Board, starting with a set of policies that had been out for public review since our December meeting, and the Board took action to adopt the recommendations to those policies. And then we went right into a network system upgrade as a part of our East Bloss program and as a part of our commitment to strengthening the safety and security of our digital programs. And Dr. Blanton presented that business item. And then our third item was a professional learning agreement specifically designed for professional learning for our principals and our principal supervisors, and really developing that instructional leadership and coaching and feedback model for continuous improvement focused on leading exceptional schools. And then finally, we had a community use request that was approved by the Board to use one of our facilities. It was really a great action taken by the Board, and, you know, I think it'd be also important to acknowledge that during recognitions, the Board got some recognition, particularly in reference to our Day to Celebrate Learning in Henry County Schools. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
That is correct. Thanks to the outstanding partnerships that we have all across this county with great leadership in each of our municipalities, as well as the county level, several of our municipalities, you know, were able to also provide a proclamation in recognition of Celebrate Learning in Henry County Schools Day, which we had on December the 9th. They were able to, you know, solidify their own proclamations that we were able to share with the Board. And it just really is a true testament to the partnerships that exist across all levels of government here in the county, and it's what makes, you know, our school system successful and what will ultimately make this county successful and, you know, in their efforts to grow and attract new residents to the county for years to come. We were able to also, the Board took action on one more item, and that was the approval of our personnel agenda, and we actually got to welcome a couple new administrative team members to our team, so.
Yeah, so welcome to the team Katina Theder, joining our legal compliance team as our Title IX investigator. Welcome to the team.
And so that pretty much did it for our board meeting this month. Of course, you know, January is a great time to start anew in this new year and still a continuation of the great work that was started during this 2019-2020 school year. And we thank you, as always, for your input and your participation in these important meetings. And so if you would ever, you know, like to view any of our past meetings, you can always go online and check those out on our On Demand feature, or you can, you know, get all your recaps right here, and we hope you will continue to do that. We thank you again. We wish you all a very successful and prosperous new year. Thanks for joining us. As is the case with most board meetings, there's a lot more information that you're able to witness being there in person or watching the full version on demand that we're unable to bring to you here in this very short board meeting recap. The links to those presentations and videos can be found in the description section directly below this video.